Good evening, everyone. Today is February 9th. It is 6:37, and this is the Acushnet planning board. This meeting is being recorded for the YouTube channel for a future date and also via Zoom. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. We are missing a few tonight, but we do have a quorum. Gentlemen, could you please introduce yourselves?
Steve Boucher, member.
Dave Viggen, member.
Mark Francois, chairman. Do the two of you have... Were both of you at this meeting on December 22nd?
I was here.
Everybody was here.
Everybody was here, so I don't know if they were.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go. If we can recall, yeah. Did you guys have a chance to look this over that Paul sent you?
Yeah.
Do we have any issues? Comments, concerns?
If I had any comments, I sent it to Paul.
Yeah, I don't think you did.
I don't think I did.
No.
I read it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 22nd, 2022.
Second. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I was ahead of the big storm.
Okay.
Yeah. It's like that carried into the next day.
I think you're supposed to announce that this meeting is being video and audio taped.
I did, didn't I?
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Video and audio tapes.
Take the whole thing.
And Zoom. Yeah, but okay, there is nothing that corresponds, so we can continue. All right, what we do have, discussions on other topics. It's all your show, Mr. Romanelli.
I noticed that on the agenda, that was me, myself, and I.
It's your show. Let's start off with A&R 2023-01 for land on 251 Mendel Road, Acushnet, Mass. Zenith Land Survey LLC, New Bedford, Mass. Drawn up for John E. Williams, trustee Greenberg Camp Fieldy Trust. Oh, sorry, did I throw you out of order?
Yeah, that's all right. I took a chance. And of course, got it wrong.
Okay, for the record, my name is Joe Romanelli, one of the owners of Zenith Land Survey LLC, here representing attorney Jay Williams, who owns the old Girl Scout camp on Mendel Road. 251 is the actual address. We were here many, I want to say 2017, and cut up these four main lots here that are now, have houses on them. I think two of these are actually occupied, this one's still under construction. But what Mr. Williams would like to do is cut out a retreat lot of 120,000 square feet with the required, we've got 40.21 feet of frontage on Mendel Road, a public way. Believe it or not, it's all uplands. There are some wetlands coming through the old gravel road to the Girl Scout camp, but it does not impact the lot we are creating here. I believe it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that one. We did show the building envelope, it's 75 feet all the way around, so the setbacks are on there.
Now, 120,000 square feet, is that the square or is that the whole parcel?
The whole parcel.
Whole parcel.
Correct. It's going to be double the 60,000 square feet for a retreat lot in Acushnet.
Is it double? I thought it was five acres, no?
No, it's 120,000.
Is it 120,000?
It's exactly double.
It's exactly double.
I did put the requirements on here. Minimum lot size, 120,000 square feet. It's got to have a minimum of 50,000 square feet.
What happens at that angle, the...
Gotcha. Thank you.
The point where the northwest corner of the frontage, it just sort of dead ends, the road's pulling away. What happens, does the road have an angle point on that?
Yeah, there's a stone wall that runs right basically almost from this driveway across the whole lot here.
What happens when you get to the end of the stone wall? You know what I mean?
Yeah, the line should continue almost in the street.
It's a straight line?
Yes.
But the road's pulling away, though?
Yes. We do have an old New Bedford Gas and Airs and easement power easement that goes through then and runs through a garrison across the street.
Yeah, there's a house next door, right?
Correct. Out back.
Yeah, driveway cuts through.
But this goes all the way to Mendel, it doesn't stop. This...
Property line.
Property line goes right to Mendel Road?
Correct.
Yeah, that's your layout, but the road just pulls away.
So you're going to just town property between there, basically, easement.
Oh, I see.
Yes, between the pavement and the wall, yes. It's a variable width road, it does have some funky turns to it. This also has a future solar, I don't know what the status of that is, but...
On the back here?
Yeah. I believe it's about 20 acres.
It's a massive solar farm.
And I believe it's... I think it starts right about here.
Special permit, they'll build it probably here.
Okay. I don't know if they have stormwater.
Yeah, I don't know. I know they got proof of special permit through the board. I just, I know it doesn't have a building permit yet, so I know they might have to go through conservation still.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
It's good to meet. It's going to be cut and dry?
It is cut and dry.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we have, do we have a box of pens?
Yeah. We have black for the MyLiner. Do you happen to have...
Do you have the MyLiners on you?
I do.
Do you have a...
I do have a pen.
Okay.
You'll have to share it.
Oh, that's fine, all right. Usually the town clerk does that, but today we have a very short one.
Do you have a proof receipt, right? I don't know why the town clerk's going to be paying, but just proof of the fee was being paid. If you could just put that in for the record.
Yep.
You got everything else?
Now, I know you have the MyLiner, do we have to sign the set of plans? Do we have to all...
Yeah, there's supposed to be...
Yeah, there were supposed to be 10 copies were dropped off?
Yeah, those were dropped off. I think they're still at the planning, or at the town clerk's office. And we need to sign all 10 plans?
We're supposed to sign them, and then they disperse them to the other departments. Do you have access to the room?
No, I have access to our room. I don't have access to the town clerk's room, they're not in our room.
They're not in our room.
I was there today. We have five copies, no, four copies here.
Right here with us?
Right here with us. One, two, three, four.
Four.
Yeah, that's interesting by the way. Okay. Why don't we do this? We endorse the four we have, we endorse the plan. Then if you could scan the signed plan...
I'm just going to suggest that.
You email it to Paul.
I can have, I can have somebody drop them off tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, if you scan... Oh, you mean bring signed copies? Okay, that would be, that would be helpful.
I can definitely do that.
Okay.
So today, tonight, right?
Today is the 9th.
Yeah.
Since you're... We'll let you date tomorrow, so they're all the same, handwriting. We actually have five of them, don't we?
Yeah, we have five.
We're not... Here's my pocket right there. So five more copies tomorrow. We don't have, we'll just do it that way. Some things have been no work until the monster. Have to deal with the MyLiner.
Good luck, Jim.
Have things been pretty quiet in town? I haven't been here in months.
Yeah, since your last dig, it's been quiet, other than the one solar farm that we have issues with. Yeah, it's been quiet two to three months.
So yours, Dave?
Do you have MyLiner?
One more thing, should we grab it? Our fourth is way too late.
We should, we'll have to... We got one more, right? No, there should be, oh, right here.
Yeah, it's right there. We're going to have to table the verge one.
Yeah, that's it. All the strike is...
There's one of them that I worked for the butter. I have a conflict, I can't.
Which one is that one?
It's Tilly Way.
Tilly Way. Where are we going to be tabling Tilly Way anyways?
We didn't have the officials, we didn't have...
I got a call saying we didn't get the official signature?
It's, I talked to Pam Labonte this afternoon, it was delivered. Unfortunately, it's under Paul's door, in the planning board, they put it underneath. So we did get it, we could do it anyway.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the only ones that's in Montana, I lived in Montana, we had a difficult time getting a hold of her. That's right, but she did FedEx it over and it's, it's in the planning board office, underneath the door, is what Pam said she was going to put it. I thought Paul was going to be here tonight, I guess.
No, he, he only works until 2:00. This is yours.
Which one would you like to hear next?
Let's see what we've got next. Skipping Tilly Way or go to Main Street, yeah. A&R 2023-03 for land on 1461 Main Street, Acushnet, Mass. Zenith Land Survey LLC, New Bedford, Mass. Drawn for Diane and Ernest Ventura of 1461 Main Street, Acushnet, Mass.
Yeah, this one is very straightforward. Diane and Ernest Ventura on the Apple Peach Orchard on 1461 North Main Street, just south of Thomas Hill, it's right up in here. And basically what they would like to do is cut out a four main lot on their northerly property line. 60,000 square foot lot, it's got the 150 by 150 box dimension on it. It leaves them with the remainder of 5.37 acres and the rest of the orchard. Again, I think it's pretty straightforward, there were no wetlands involved. There are some wetlands just to the north, but they are not on site at all. And I think the last time we were here, we cut out a lot for Doug and Donna Corey out It obviously was a lot bigger at one point, now it's shrinking in size.
Is there a house on that lot?
Yes.
How do they access?
I'm sorry, this house here?
Yeah.
They come through as a retreat lot.
Oh, gotcha.
Goes out back. I believe that house is still under construction. If I can entertain any questions, you might help.
Yes.
Yeah, I had Mr. Bering on there, it's snow. We bought 10 fresh copies.
Would have been a problem for the deed.
Yes.
I think we would have seen the plan again or something, I don't know.
There's a, there's working orchard right there. I don't know if it doesn't school up any of the farmland, is that farmland, bridge to farmland? I don't think it's in chapter 61A from what they told me.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Even as a Apple Peach Orchard?
I think they took a lot of it out before they cut out the Corey lot out back.
I think even if we signed the plan, I think they have to offer first right refusal to the town, even if it was under 61A. That is a good question.
So you're saying we need to know...
Yeah.
Definitely it wasn't under chapter before we can sign it?
That would be a safe thing, but...
Yeah. I'm thinking back to Russ, Russ's stuff, he added it. And in order to offer it to the town, you have to have, you have to have a law carved out, because they wouldn't be taking the whole thing out. Let's just say it was, okay? If they wanted to take this out, they'd need a plan to take it out. And then if it is 61A, they have to go to the select board and offer first right refusal.
Well, they would have to go to the select board even after this.
Yes.
Even if we do sign it...
Yes, exactly.
With a purchase settlement.
Yes.
Anyways, so regardless, I had to go...
I think we're safe signing the plan.
I think we're safe signing.
Mr. Viggen?
I'll make them, yes.
Hi, this is attorney Nicholas Gomes on the Zoom.
Can you, hold on.
Hold, hold on one quick second, Nicholas, Mr. Gomes. Nick, can you turn the volume up a little bit out here?
You're so low, we can barely hear you, Nick. We need to adjust the monitor.
All right, should be good to go.
Can you say something now, Mr. Gomes?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. Nicholas Gomes, counsel for the homeowners.
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to inform you that this has already been presented to the select board, and they passed on taking any action relative to this property.
So it was under chapter and it's already been in front of the select board?
That is my understanding, correct.
Okay.
That solves the issue.
Yeah, answers that question. Thank you very much.
A motion to approve the plan?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to get all the plans. Same deal, John.
Make another five?
These are all stamped in, so we probably have to fight them off there.
Probably. But I don't, I was there later, I didn't see it, I didn't see it. But I know that there's a little bit of confusion there.
Can you get the receipt up here?
Application fee, that's me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Procedure, you want to make a motion to table five and seven to the way due to the applicant's signature not being on the form? It's on our list, we need to do something with it.
We do need to table this one.
Due to lack of information, so that we don't get caught in the 20-day period.
We have a motion to table A&R 2023-02, land for five and seven, lot five and seven, Tilly Way. We have a motion.
Second.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul, you're listening, the motion was to table it due to not having the signature of the applicant owner of the property in time for the meeting.
Just so you know, it is...
It's there.
No.
It's not here. It's there but not here. We have to procedurally just cover our bases, that's all.
I'll look into the MyLiner. Can I submit the receipt, because I'll probably end up losing that?
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll put it with the rest of these and I'll give it to Paul, so, yep. And last but not least, A&R 2023-04 for land on Oak and Woodland Street, 96R Peckham Road, Acushnet, Mass. Conceptual layout plan, Zenith Land Survey LLC, New Bedford, Mass. Drawn for Carol Ryan, 24 Bryant Brook Street, Northern Mass, 0214.
Okay, this one's not as straightforward as the last two.
It's really not, A&R, correct.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question. We have done this as an A&R in the past, because they were private ways constructed, I mean, private ways created prior to subdivision control law. But what's different? Oak Street is where they would like to carve out, it's a 40-foot right of way, not constructed. We are proposing to construct a roadway with two lots, lots one and, I'm sorry, three and two. And Woodland Street, which does have a dwelling existing on it, it's currently a gravel driveway, to expand that into lot one with an area of 60,000 square feet. So my question, I guess, to the board is how should we proceed? Or what, in your opinion, is the best way to go? Do we Form C and get the butters notified? Or do we do a roadway improvement? That's basically what we had done in the past for Bradford Street, Labonte Street, James Street. They were private ways in existence and we did a roadway, came back in with topography, drainage design, but it was still approved under A&R.
Can I go first?
We have one quick question. Woodland is a private road, the town doesn't plow it, maintain it, do anything with it?
Correct.
Yeah, it's almost like a, it's an elaborate driveway.
Yes.
Yeah, I drove by there to take a look.
Not even elaborate.
Yeah, I went as far as elaborate. I drove by there to take a look at this before this meeting and, yeah, there's not much there at all.
Right. Yeah, we bring it up to a 20-foot width. My client would love to know if we could go gravel with this type of roadway, or is that going to be a required paved roadway?
Dave?
Well, first, let's, let's do away with the first elephant in the room. It's, it's clearly a definitive subdivision, because you're creating frontage, you're creating lots. Even if, in my opinion, I wasn't on the board when, the past practice of the board I'm not in favor of. Even if, say for instance, this road went all the way up to the top and you wanted to build the whole road through to get the frontage, viable frontage, the way they were done on Pembroke. In my opinion, a lot of towns make you go through the Form C subdivision process. And the reason I'm in favor of that is because then it provides the board with a mechanism to have surety that everything's built right. We have that, we have an issue with Morn Lane, that was done that way and we have no control over how that turns out, it's really out of our hands, because we gave them permission to just build out the road and I could never support that moving forward, I just think it's bad practice.
Gotcha.
You know, so even if it was just the road layout that exists... You know, so even if it was just the road layout that exists, the layout is the layout. If it's a 34-wide layout, it's a 34-wide layout, right? You do what you can. With that being said, this proposes additional road layout so that triggers Form C on top of that.
Okay.
The problem I see with both... Well, let's start with the hammerhead. I don't think that's big enough for a fire truck to turn around. I don't think it's good practice to have the road layout, the actual travel way ended the layout. There should be a gap there for maintenance purposes, plowing purposes. So that hammerhead should be reconfigured. I'm not so sure that when that fire truck comes up and turns this, you know, left, that's long enough for him to do it. Especially with the ladder truck that he's got now.
Yeah, we'll have area to do that, I mean, if we...
It looks like it, you've got plenty of room.
Yeah, we've got 20...
I'm just pointing out a little, I think, you know, that needs a little work.
Yep.
As far as gravel, uh, for one lot or two lots, I don't have a problem with gravel. But I see the challenge at these sites is gonna be stormwater management. I'm really concerned because I've seen the septic plans for these houses that are new and they're monsters, I mean, tons of fill. Water tables are 18 inches from the surface.
I'm sure the source is...
It all goes uphill. What happens when you get to the top? Does it crest out?
It does. It does flow from north to south, but it does crest out. It's fairly flat.
But it's uphill from Morningside to the back. It climbs. And the waters... Anything you do, the water's gonna come down and end up in Morningside. I don't know how you deal with the stormwater, I really don't.
I'm gonna get the Lakeville office, Jamie or Niles, to jump on this once we get a tow boat. I did want to say too, there are no wetlands, believe it or not, on that five-acre property. We had Steve Schmeeel walk it and...
Yeah, I went to Max Mapper, I didn't see anything. It really is far away. I know, it's just lousy soils.
Yes.
And, you know, I... I'm really concerned having two... This one, the good thing is this is already here to some extent, right? It's not like you can even put catch basins at the bottom of the hill. What are you gonna connect them to?
Yeah, I don't think Morningside has any drainage on it.
I know, that's a few more of a problem. You know, and I think there are puddles here and there on Morningside. I think they already have issues. And I think that, like Woodland, when I looked at that, I think there's a driveway right across the street. Water must run... It must run right down guys' driveway and that's doing heavy storms.
Yeah.
What I was wondering is, rather than have two roads... If it crests out at the top, rather than have two roads running back, are we better off having one to serve as three lots? I know you might have to build some more excess road to... Because you're only gonna get frontage on one side, but instead of building this, this is all wasted road. You're not getting anything out of the frontage, right? You take that and you put it here, you eliminate this, and then you're almost to here and you're almost at the cul-de-sac. Then you can get the water to go that way.
I got you.
It seems like you've got plenty of... You've got 28,000 extra square feet, 20,000 square feet. You got a lot of... You got an extra acre here to play with.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
I just... At least this road is like half-built. I mean, it's something there anyway, right? You've got something to work with. So you do pre and post. But this would be easier to work with than this one. You can take out all the trees. And I don't know how you're gonna capture the water and do anything with it. I don't know how... Even doing this one, I don't know how you're gonna meet the stormwater rates because it's so kind of over the top. And I think that... I think you really gotta get a stormwater permit before you go too deep into the definitive. I mean, you might wanna put together a preliminary plan and get the stormwater permit before you come to us.
Okay.
Or before you go to definitive or something, I don't know. Those are my initial thoughts.
Okay. We'll take that into consideration.
Steve, can I address this?
No, he just, I think Dave put it kinda plainly, kinda addressed some of the things I was looking at. First thing was stormwater. And we know with Morningside, I mean...
I think point payment there would be like dangerous for the neighborhood. And if it's... I think the towns are...
We know what the septic systems are up there, what they're like up that way. Especially you do, I know it's...
I see the...
There was a conversation back when I was on the Board of Public Works around running sewer up the end of town that we just kept... Because of, and we, you know, we're hearing some absorbent amount of cost that people were expending for... To replace their septic systems up there.
Just taking the whole front... Yeah, the whole with a lot in some of these. They do perk in the dry season.
They do.
A couple of them are.
Two, 24 minutes an inch.
Yeah, big boys.
Yeah, I believe this one's been permitted here, that's taken...
Is that the one that... That's all been just recently cleared?
Yes.
All right. When I was looking at it, I wasn't sure.
There's at least...
There's a for sale sign on it too, I think it was...
Lots for sale.
For sale, yeah.
There's at least, what, three or four new houses on that road?
Yeah, this house is...
This one's relatively...
This one's fairly good.
Yeah, there's a couple, maybe this one or this one. And then at the end of the street, then they do a couple lots.
Yes, down here on this side, I know. Yeah, so I think if we... You're right, if we did come in here and bang the left, you'd probably end up somewhere here to get the frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And then eliminate that altogether.
I mean, you know, be a road that would remain private if it was gravel.
All right, and we'll do some test bits too. I know I did speak to Niles Ziger at the Lakeville office and he said we definitely wanna get some soil testing done so we can start doing the drainage design.
If it flattens out or goes north to south or whatever, you know, you can control it on the site, but this area is problematic. I don't know how you control pre and post. You know, you gotta have 20 feet, in my opinion. So huddle it to the top of... I don't know how much you can tip to go that way, you know what I mean? And then you got this guy you gotta contend with. And he's gonna get an approved road, but he's sitting back there all by himself. You never know what you're gonna get on that.
Yep.
If the soil... We don't have the 60 feet. No, they go 40, right?
You got... Yeah, that one's 40. Are they all 40?
Yep, correct.
They're 40. Well, that's good, you got room, but not a lot. Problem is you can't do like drainage trenches or anything because...
Where are they gonna go?
The water table's like two feet from the old ass.
How often is the board meeting? They be a couple times a month or...
Well, at least weekly.
We only cancel if there's nothing.
Yeah.
We'll try to come back with a preliminary plan next meeting. Next meeting's on 23rd, right?
The next meeting is February 23rd, yes.
Now, for preliminary design, do we have to notify the Butters for that too?
No, it's just you and us.
I think that's the way we will.
And we'll put Tilly Way on 23rd as well.
Yes, that would be great.
So you gotta retract this? All of it submitted for...
Conceptual.
Conceptual discussion purposes. Just looking for feedback. I mean, are you guys okay with gravel?
For three private lots on a private road? Yes, I'm okay. I'm personally okay with gravel. As long as the town has nothing involved with it, I'm okay with gravel.
Yeah. You'd have to be a homeowner association to maintain a little roof. But, like I said, I'd want you to go through... And we can talk about the preliminary and all that. You know, we can even get to a point where we approve a preliminary, but it's non-binding. It's non-binding and I think, you know, stormwater should be dealt with before. You file... I don't know, you could file a definitive, but then I think it would be like... The brakes would be put off until you dealt with the stormwater board, you get a stormwater permit. Because you know, that man's gonna sign it out to peer review. You know, they're gonna scrutinize it, so it's... I know it's a challenge, you know, when you get... It's a tough... You really want the road to go the other way. But it doesn't. Maybe the soils are better up the top and the back, I don't know. Maybe they're all lousy in the front.
Fitzgerald, believe it or not, back in, I think, 1997 or something, did a bunch of perk tests out there.
Oh, really?
They were better up this edge of the site than they were down the south end.
Once we laid those lots, we know it's been happening, so...
Yeah, this parcel all belonged to Roger Lindisous. House out here was a hall. It was all one lot and they chopped that off, I think in 19... It was like 1987, 88. Very good. I will take those suggestions and run with it.
No.
We're good?
We're good.
Did you have them?
I'm good.
All right, so that concludes the A and Rs. Current planning, there's none. Long-range planning, there's none. Any other business, nothing else came up within 48 hours. Our next meeting is Thursday, February 23rd. Regent a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.